At Harbor High School dedicating our new baseball and softball facilities. And I would encourage you to go to Harbor and in the future, go to Springdale High School to see our new facilities. It's absolutely amazing that we have the opportunity to have kids on campus play competitive sports in all the arenas of sports and whatever extracurricular activities. So I want to give a special appreciation to our administration and our staff and our maintenance staff and everyone who was involved, parents, booster clubs, my colleagues on the board here for having the vision and the courage and the financial fortitude to make that happen in Springdale. So it was just, it was a great honor to be there to see the kids and just, Dr. Rollins, I really appreciate us having the opportunity to do that.
Thank you.
So just wanted to say that.
I appreciate that and I know all concerned, Mr. President.
Board, you've had the minutes from the previous meeting. Any questions, changes, or notations to the minutes? You want, yeah, go ahead.
On page five, there's, it says, Miss Creek approved. And it should say, Ms. Cook in the fourth paragraph.
Ms. Newman, can you change that to motion of approval? It's on page five of the minutes from the previous board meeting. Change it to Ms. Cook. Thank you. I need a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
So we have a motion by Mrs. Creek to approve the minutes and a second by Mrs. Cook. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Board, you've also had the agenda for tonight. Any changes? Dr. Rollins, you made a notation of change.
Yes, sir. I would ask the board to go to page three in the agenda under item D, D1. If it's okay with the board, but because we have some young students here, I'd like to move that forward to page two following the focus session. If we could just call that E2. D1 becomes E2 and that will allow our young students to get home at a more reasonable hour. Other than that, the agenda would stand as presented. Mr. President.
I make a motion to approve the agenda with one correction or modification?
Second.
Second.
We had a motion by Mr. Hutchinson and a second by Mr. Emerson to approve tonight's agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This is the time of the board meeting we have reserved for patron comments. If you have anything you'd like to address with the board, just come to the podium, tell us your name, what your concern is. Just understand that we can't take any action tonight, but we'd love to hear from any patrons or parents. Okay, Dr. Rollins?
Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen, it is great to sit here and see this level of participation from the schools of the district. It makes the work of the board and certainly our administrative team feel very good for you to be a part in the process. So, so welcome. It is my pleasure to introduce our student representative for tonight's meeting. Our student is from the Archer Learning Center. I would ask Christina Hallman if she would come forward. Christina, we're very glad to have you here, Mr. or Dr. Davis. We appreciate you being here with her. Board, just, and members of the audience, just some information about Christina. She's been a dedicated and model student at Archer Learning Center since enrolling in the fall semester of 2019. She's improved her grades since enrolling at Archer and has maintained As and Bs. That's really great work. We are very proud of you. She's a member of the Archer Women of Worth. That's a marvelous organization. And maybe in your comments to the board, you could give us even more information about it if you will. And to be a member of that group, she has to be nominated by the staff. So everybody's seeing the good role model that you're exhibiting and we thank you for that. That group participates in community outreach and the students are mentored by several female staff members. They must maintain a strong academic record and their conduct and attitude must remain exemplary. She was recently chosen to receive the distinguished Diamond Award presented by the state by the Arkansas Association for Alternative Education. So again, your work is recognized well beyond our district. Christina has completed all of her paperwork for higher education and she plans to attend the Northwest Technical Institute where she will study automotive technology. That is just beautiful. We're so glad to have you here. Would you lead us in the pledge for this evening?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Christina, I know the board would love to hear any personal comments you might have about your school year or items of interest. And again, welcome. We're so glad to have you.
Thank you. Springdale Public Schools have meant so much to me. I have been to a lot of schools here in Springdale. I've been to Bay Area Elementary, Monitor, and then for middle school, I went to Sonora and J.O. Kelly. And I went to junior high at George Junior High. And then for high school, I went to Springdale. From Springdale, then I transferred to Archer to be able to graduate on time. And being at Archer, I've been able to accomplish a lot. Not only am I on, like, on track to graduating, they've given me an opportunity to finish my last course at home with my child. I will be graduating in May, which is good. And the teachers and all the administrators I've known so far have all been amazing. I really appreciate the schools here. My time here in Springdale Schools has really given me the opportunity to realize that I can do pretty much anything I want. I can be who I want and show my son that I can be more than what I thought I could I plan to go to NTI if, if I have time. And I really appreciate, like, all the teachers who have helped me through this because it has been challenging, but been able to make it. So, thank you.
Good job.
We got to meet you at dedication and you spoke and I was just in awe of your ability to reach people. And I'm just excited to see your future. You are someone that I can look up to because I've watched you exceed, you know, beyond what probably you even thought a couple of years ago. And, you know, just watching and learning a little bit about you, I'm so proud of you. I'm so proud of the fact that you're in front of us today. And I hope we get to hear from you again after you graduate and, and just continue to see great things from you.
Thank you.
So tell, so tell everybody in the room how old your son is.
He turned a month on the 28th last month.
A month. And still doing good in school, weren't you?
Mm.
Yeah. That's a proper start.
It's awesome.
It's just incredible.
Do you have any questions?
I don't.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Ms. Tisher, if you'd come forward, I know you have a very special recognition as well.
Good evening, Dr. Rollins and board. At this time, I'd like to welcome Ms. Haley Person to the podium. Haley is a ninth grade student at George Junior High. And you might remember last month when I gave a little brief introduction, Haley had a really exciting opportunity this past summer to attend an advanced songwriting camp at the Country Music Hall of Fame in Nashville. And as her final project, she composed an original song, both music and the lyrics. And after she tells you a little bit about her experience, she's going to perform her song for us.
Hi, my name's Haley. I'm a ninth grader at George. Last summer, I attended an advanced songwriting summer camp at the Country Music Hall of Fame. I was the only student in Arkansas to attend the camp and it's kids all across the U.S. and even one from the Middle East, which was pretty cool. So now I have a friend in the Middle East. I still keep in touch with all of the people I know. And throughout the week, we would work together to write songs. And I wrote a personal song with the help of a professional songwriter. And it was really cool because we got to meet some amazing people and make great connections. And I'm happy to say that I will be attending the camp again this summer.
That's right.
So I guess I'll go into something.
Okay.
It's a long answer. I asked you to do that. It's so special to see your talent, that's for sure. Board, any comments or questions you have of Haley?
I think we need your autograph now.
What's your favorite part, the songwriting or the actual singing?
Um...
For the playing the singing?
No, I like all of it. Songwriting is nice because it's like, it's the way I can express myself. It really helps me with purchasing back to book. So I do like that part of all of it.
Is this something that you're hoping to do in the future?
Yeah, so I'm interested in pursuing music in the future. It's kind of hard to make it in the music business, so if that doesn't work out, I'll be in the music picture.
I happen to have a contract in my backpack. Board, members of the audience, it's a pleasure for me to recognize the newest member of our board, Mr. Clinton Bell. Clinton, will you kind of wave and let everybody see you? It's such a pleasure to have people like Mr. Bell on the board. As we've talked, I know a lot about him and I'm going to share some of that. His mom is a career teacher, so he kind of grew up in a household, if you will, of educators and been involved in school, both directly and indirectly, probably his whole life. Still talks and visits with her about, and I understand she's taught for a long time. She took a sabbatical, she went back, she taught for a while, she took a sabbatical, she went back. That, that just shows you the nature of this work. Polit just continues to pull you in, that's for sure. Mr. Bell's well-known in the community as a business leader. He's a member of the Rotary Club. He's been involved in the, the production, if you will, of, of games out at, out at Harbor. He helps with the management system out there and have for a number of years now. So Clinton, we're so glad to have you. And Mr. Ombi, let me yield to you and members of the board that we're all elated that you're here. So, welcome.
Would you like to say anything, Clinton?
Just thank you.
We usually try to put people on the spot pretty quick, so.
I know.
It's kind of how it went with me, so. No, we're glad to have you. Looking forward to working with you over the next, however long I'm still on the board and the rest of these folks, for sure.
Great. Mr. President, I, I know at this time of our meeting, following the annual school election, we organized the board in terms of leadership for the school year. I would yield to you in terms of how to proceed with that process.
Thank you, Dr. Rollins. Yeah, it's time to change our leadership structure on the board and I believe we have a motion prepared.
I would like to make a motion that for the upcoming term, we have Ms. Cook as a president, Mr. Hutchinson as vice president, and Mr. Emerson as a secretary.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Creek and a second by Mr. Ramos to change our board leadership to Michelle Cook, Randy Hutchinson, and Nick Emerson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Just for clarity, Mr. President, the new secretary treasurer will be Mr. Emerson?
Mr. Emerson, yes.
Very good. Great slate of officers, for sure.
And I will turn over the parliamentary procedures to Mrs. Cook and the rest of the board. And I've, I've considered it an honor, I'm sorry, to serve as the president. We've got a great team. We've got a great staff here in Springdale. It's a pleasure to serve with you guys.
I'm really big shoes in the foot. I've worked once before and for all of the generations and all times. And I hope that I can do at least a little bit as well as he did. So.
Set to our focus session for the meeting today. There's this term spark.
Spark.
We're excited about that. What does that mean?
We're excited too. So as I was walking up here looking at my team, there they are. They have definitely been a spark and there were a few things they said, now don't forget to do this and don't forget to do this. And so they have helped me prepare for this evening. So, good evening. It is absolutely a pleasure to be here with all of you. I'm Stephanie Anderson, principal at Helen Tyson Middle School. And I just want to say, I think we have been sparked, I don't know if she's, by Ms. Christina, and she stepped out for a minute, and also to Haley, thank you. What a spark and inspiration and innovation and determination, perseverance, all those things. As well as, thank you, students that are here in our audience. Many of you are here to share your story and parents that are here as well. We cannot do this without you and our community partners, our school board, Dr. Rollins, Ms. Cynthia, and Mr. Ombi, thank you for leading. And I talk with our students all the time, how much do you think the school board gets paid? It's a lot of time and a lot of hours. You all make about a hundred thousand each. And we double it every year. But the truth be known, of course, you, you, you just serve and you give of your heart and of your time and, and thank you for that because you also spark us to be our best and you support us in everything that we do. So looking at the screen, of course, we're always trying to start in the beginning with all means all, teach them all, and work our way up to application-ready, which is where we are today. And that spark that helps prepare us of what we do want to become. So as we've looked over the past, actually, two years and talked about the building blocks of being innovative and what that looks like as a learner, and we looked at both Curo's work and Don Wetrick, being collaborative, task-oriented, daring, daring sometimes, is it relevant? I don't know if I pushed that or not. I think observant and maybe task-oriented are what, no, reflective and ongoing, but I like task-oriented as well. I've already said that. So all of those components bring us to having the spark and the drive to continue in our work each and every day. This takes me back. Whenever we were given this topic, and I'm working with such a great group with Westwood and Walker and Lakeside, I could not help but think, and many of you may have sung this song as, back in the day, Pass It On. It only takes a spark to get a fire going and soon all those around can warm up in its glowing. And that is so true. And I know my grandmother shared that with me all the time. Stephanie, be that spark that drives others. And so again, when I was talking with my team, there they are. My team, I said, ladies, what does that mean? What's a spark? What, what do you think of if we're sitting around a fire and they said, you know, Ms. Anderson, that's when we all get together. When we're sitting around a fire and we get together, that, that's what we do. And then another one says, I really do feel warm. And so I kind of have chills right now because working with these kiddos and these other schools, it has really been a spark for us. And so we just want to share our inspiration with you. And what we continue to find is that what sparks each individual is different and unique for every single person. And so looking at Westwood and Walker and Helen Tyson and Lakeside and Springdale Schools, we know that we have the opportunity to, to design our schools that value creativity over compliance and making over memorizing. So we look forward to sharing with you many sparks from Springdale Schools. So our first introduction would be from Westwood Elementary with the Westwood Wolves.
Well, good evening. Thank you, Dr. Rollins and the board for allowing us to come tonight to present to you about our spark. So one very unique thing about Westwood is we are an IB school, International Baccalaureate, and we are, we have the primary years program. So the culminating experience for a PYP program is the fifth grade exhibition. And you may not know much about that, but it's a collaborative process where it involves identifying and investigating and offering solutions to a real-life issue. So the kids have student choice and voice in their project and what they choose. And as Dr. Rollins has taught us, that sparks engagement, which always sparks learning when they're really engaged in what they're doing. So when it comes time for them to present their exhibition project, they present in different rooms in the school and our whole student body rotates through kindergarten through fourth grade, so they get to experience what it's like to try to teach kindergartners and, and keep their attention. It's fun to watch. But they all go in and they get to see their projects. And so part of their jobs too is to find ways with that communication piece and to engage their audience with a game or an activity. And you'll see an example of that in just a moment. So I have with me Isabella and Leslie and Rodney, and I'm going to turn it over to them to tell you about their fifth grade exhibition project.
Before I start, I just want to say it's an honor being here. Okay. My name is Isabella Allred. I'm a fifth grader at Westwood Elementary School. What sparked us to choose racism as our exhibition topic? We chose racism because it is a very big thing that is affecting our planet. Racism, racism is something we want to stop. It has been affecting places such as schools, parks, and homes. When we first started exhibition, I remembered an exhibition group from last year called Cultural Biases. That group put up paintings with positive messages around our school. This year, the walls were painted, so we had to take them down. When the walls were finished drying, my friend and I wanted to hang them up again so everyone could have a positive message in their heads. Ms. Crumbie said that we should take on that project since this is, since this is our spark.
Hi, my name is Leslie Sanchez. I am a fifth grader at Westwood Elementary School. What happened during our research? During our research, we first wanted to look at racism because Isabella remembered last year's exhibition group called Cultural Biases. We couldn't find enough information about racism and had to stop our research. What we did find was basically about races or skin tones. Then we decided to change it up to causing harm through racism. We decided to research causing harm through racism because in class we have been talking about this. We also gave some examples of how people respond to racism. Then we wanted to make a game, so we decided to make cards that had negative and positive things people say. How the game worked is by one of us saying either a negative or positive. The students would find the opposite of what I said.
Hi, my name is Rodney Stevie. I am a fifth grader at Westwood Elementary School. And my topic was what causes racism? How do you know it is racism? In our community, racism is a big problem. Racism takes many forms and can happen in many places. It includes prejudice, discrimination, or hatred directed at someone because of their color, ethnicity, or national origin. People often associate racism with acts of abuse or harassment. However, it doesn't need to involve violent or intimidating behavior. A type of harm is racism. Racism can be a brutal act or as simple as calling people's names. Standing against racism is bigger than it used to be.
And here are some actions. Give students voice. Promote self-awareness and self-reflection. Promote and teach tolerance, which is the ability or willing, willingness to tolerate. For instance, the existence of opinions, beliefs, and behavior that you don't agree with.
Then we wanted to make a game, so we decided to make cards that had negative and positive things people say. How the game worked is by one of us saying either a negative or positive. The students would find the opposite of what I said.
Hi, my name is Rodney Stevie. I am a 5th grader at Westwood Elementary School. And my topic was what causes racism? How do you know it is racism? In our community, racism is a big problem. Racism takes many forms and can happen in many places. It includes prejudice, discrimination, or hatred directed at someone because of their color, ethnicity, or national origin. People often associate racism with acts of abuse or harassment. However, it doesn't need to involve violent or intimidating behavior. A type of harm is racism. Racism can be a brutal act or as simple as calling people's names. Standing against racism is bigger than it used to be.
And here are some actions. Give students voice. Promote self-awareness and self-reflection. Promote and teach tolerance, which is the ability or willingness to tolerate. For instance, the existence of opinions, beliefs, and behavior that you don't agree with. Create learning opportunities that acknowledge race and ethnicity. Read multicultural books about race and conflict resolution. Become aware of how racial bias impacts behavior. Identify challenges to be addressed. Reflect, reflect, and reflect.
Whenever you leave, people move on and replace what you gave to them. And that's okay. This fact does not erase your value. You are worth what you gave and you have the time. Goodbye.
And I wanted to leave you with an example of their game they came up with by comparing harmful phrases with helpful, positive phrases. And I forgot to introduce myself, but I'm Kimberly Crumbie, the very proud principal at Westwood. And now, we will turn it over... Go ahead, guys. Now, we will turn it over to our friends.
Do they have any parents here?
Oh, yes, parents. We do have some parents. If you're a parent of one of these students, would you stand? Yeah, that's you. And so, they're going to hand those to you. And also, thanks to their classroom teacher, Ms. Fowler. She was a big part in helping them get ready. And now, we will turn it over to Walker Elementary.
You did really good.
Thank you.
Good job.
Hello, everyone. My name is Lynn Ryan. I'm the principal at Walker Elementary. And we are so glad to be here. Thank you for this opportunity. We are excited to spread some Walker spark with you today. And so, we want to present to you our 5th grade students who... And Zaylee and Seth, and also Ms. Clay are going to share about what they're preparing to happen on a family night at Walker.
Hi, I'm Emma Clay. I teach 5th grade at Walker. And I wanted to give our 5th graders an opportunity to have a leadership role at our school. And so, I invited Dr. Vincent Carter, who used to be a Walker Wildcat, who's now a professor at the University of Arkansas, to come teach our 5th graders some STEM challenges. So, STEM challenges require them to use science, technology, engineering, and math principles to create something. And he's actually working with our 5th graders to design and plan STEM night, led completely by them. So, they are in charge of creating what the students or what the families will do and leading it all on their own. So, I have two 5th graders with me, Zaylee Mays and Seth Higgins. And they're going to share with you what they have done so far.
When Ms. Clay introduced the idea that we could plan a STEM night for our school, I got excited because I could pick the STEM challenges. This sparked me to do some research on my own after school. I found 10 STEM projects that I wanted to use. I shared these ideas with my group. This is exciting to me because I have the freedom to make something better for my school. I wanted to create STEM challenges with materials that families have at home so it will spark them to do some of these activities at home as well.
This opportunity gave me time to spark new ideas and brainstorm STEM challenges. One example that I'm really excited about is a bouncy ball project I think all of our Walker families will love. Love learning how to make their own bouncy ball and will be excited to take home and play with. We'd like to invite all of you to join us for the Walker STEM night on April 9th from 6:00 to 7:30, which will be filled with fun STEM activities and hosted by our 5th grade students.
And now, I would like to introduce you to Helen Tyson.
Do they have any parents there?
Walker parents. We would like to recognize Seth and Zaylee's parents.
Again, I'm Stephanie Anderson, proud principal at Helen Tyson Middle School. And I have three amazing sparks with me tonight. Gretchen Groves and Alexander Ledbetter and Alexandra Ramirez and Emily Ledbetter. So, first, I would like, each one of them has something that sparks them. And so, they're going to kind of go through and talk a little bit about their spark at Helen Tyson Middle School.
Hi, I'm Alexandra Ramirez, and I am a 6th grade student from Helen Tyson Middle School. I would first like to thank you all for allowing me to come up here today and talk to you all about what sparks me. When Ms. Anderson first asked me about what sparks me to come to Helen Tyson each day, I thought about my past years at Westwood and the people that I helped in this year and all who I have helped. And I realized that it was helping others. That is what sparks me. So, I told Ms. Anderson that I get excited about projects, especially when I help others. And my mom reminds me I am unique. And I know when working together with my peers, we share ideas. And I have found that all of us are unique. This year, I have had the opportunity to partner with the Pat Walker Children's House and create a nature-themed sensory walk. A sensory walk is a place where young or old people can go to, to relax or just have a nice calming place to be. My part in this project was creating the blueprint of what was going to be inside and all the activities in it. So, when I first met with them, my first question was, what do you want the theme to be? And they said that they would really like a nature theme because they could have something to relate to in what they were doing in the classroom. So, I tried my best to put myself in the pre-kier's shoes and try to see what they would like to do outside if they were out there normally. And I love to go outside. So, it was really easy to come up with ideas that would make them feel comfortable and just have a nice place. So, I have been really happy to have been able to create a place where they can feel like they are outside and have things to hear sounds of what's outside and what they can see and what they can touch. So, now, I would like to introduce Emily Ledbetter.
Hi, I am Emily Ledbetter, and I'm a 6th grader at HTM. Thank you for letting me come here and speak with you. So, I was thinking, what is my spark? And I was thinking about my math class and about how I love accomplishing goals in there. And I thought about my East class where I learned about technology a lot. And so, I came to the conclusion that my spark is learning is the base to my career. Then, I started talking with my teacher, Ms. Shockley, about what is your spark to teach? And she's... And so, I came up with an idea to bring her here to tell you.
I find my spark from teaching when I can see that students have understood a concept and you can see the success and the pride on their face when they get something correct. I also really enjoy it when the students make a mistake on the concept. And when they find their mistake and they put the pieces together of how to correct their errors, their face lights up even more because now they've assessed their work, they've found the mistake, and they've made the correction so that they can apply it. And they also grasp the concept and the skill even better. And I just find it fulfilling when you can see their excitement and their pride when they own their life.
So, that is the museum in a box, and it'll read an NFC tag, which is on the bottom of the 3D-printed object. The museum in a box is used for teachers to teach students who learn better visibly and students who need help with English. And now, I'd like to introduce my friend Gretchen Groves.
Hello. My name is Gretchen Groves, and I am a 6th grader at Helen Tyson Middle School. And thank you for letting me speak in front of you today. What sparks me is many things. My family who motivate me, my friends who push me to be better, the students and teachers who may help me realize that I can make mistakes, and my schoolwork and grades to show me that I don't have to be perfect. And I can succeed and I can learn from all the mistakes in all my grade and schoolwork. But... And one thing that I felt that was a spark to the school is, one of my East projects was to work and create a video for the school. And I would like to show that to you now.
We are really proud to be the Green and Gold Hornets. We have an outstanding PE program. We've had new teachers to come in or pull them away. We have our basketball, volleyball track, cross country.
I'm in cheer. I get to spend time with my friends, and I got to meet a lot of people through cheer. I'm on the basketball team. I really love PE and all the activities we do.
I love East because you can learn something new and have fun at the same time.
Kids come in the room and they're like, oh, what's that? You know, there's drones, there's 3D printers, there's virtual reality. So many kids are like, wow. I'm in 7th grade, and I can develop an app that other people use. How cool is that?
Putting technology in the hands of students and allowing them to be creative is what we're all about.
Everything that my students have created is all student-driven, student-conceived, and student-created.
I'm honored to be a part of helping our youth grow up and have more choices with their own life.
And so, well, that was the video. And one of my favorite things that I got to learn while working through this video is that when I was interviewing the students, the parents, the kids, I saw that there are so many other ways to be sparked than just my way. There was athletics, there was art, there was computer and East. And even if that's not my way, it's still a way to be sparked. And I realized that there is no wrong way. That there's a way to be sparked, there's just different ways. And my friend Addison, she one time told me that what sparks her is that all the opportunities at the school that help her know that she has no limits. She can just go as far as she wants and even be on that. And I know that one of the biggest things is that the teachers there, they give us the motivation for the sparks, but the students are the sparks. Thank you for letting me speak in front of you today.
Parents.
Yes, and we would also like to have Lakeside come on up. And we do have some Helen Tyson Middle School parents with us this evening. If you would stand so we could also recognize you. Thank you very much. And now, of course, we would like to introduce our friends from Lakeside.
Hi, good evening. I'm Michael Shepherd. I'm the principal at Lakeside. And one of the best programs that we have in our district for building student leadership capacity is our East program that Gretchen and the Helen Tyson crew just talked about. Tonight, we have two students who develop projects that not only demonstrate their own leadership, but that empower others to find their spark as well. But first, I'd like to introduce our East facilitator, Jamie Stallings, to set the stage for what our students are going to talk about and then to introduce our two awesome student speakers.
Good evening, and thank you for having us. My name is Jamie Stallings, and I'm the East facilitator at Lakeside Junior High. East is a program that enables students to choose how and what they want to learn and then take that learning and make a real, intangible impact in the community. My spark, part of my spark are the two students you see behind me. Annabelle and Jennifer have been leaders in every East program they have been. And they're incredibly high achievers. And I'm excited for them to share with you what they've been working on this year. I think Jennifer's going first. Annabelle's going first.
Hi, I'm Annabelle Bulkeem. I'm an 8th grader at Lakeside Junior High. This year, I have led a project that is ensuring that my community is fully counted in the 2020 United States Census. My community, the Marshalleys of Springdale, were massively undercounted in the last census. Some of so that has impacted our ability as a community to get recognition and government funds. This year, our East environment used professional-grade software, cutting-edge equipment, an innovative approach, and partnership with the Arkansas Coalition of Marshalleys to make sure that my people count. One of our partners' biggest concerns was overcoming the fear of having government employees knock on doors and asking how many people live there. They have Marshalleys Census takers, but where do they know where to send them? We were able to provide a solution. Using our GIS online, our GIS community analysts, and survey 123, we were able to gather demographic and language information from multiple sources, created custom layers from data that ACOM provided, and created a custom layer from a survey that we created and sent out to all the Springdale Schools in the district. And then, we began to put our data together. Our result was a map that sorted out multiple layers with census tracts and block groups that showed where marshalleys live. ACOM is using the map for census outreach and to work with the Census Bureau to send Marshalleys Census takers where our map shows marshalleys live. Our map, something that was beyond the resources of our clients by themselves, will make a difference. It will ensure that my community is counted and do count. Go in, Penile, count me in.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Reza, and I'm here to talk about the East program. So, East at Lakeside is a program that is all about creating capacity for leadership. It allows students like Annabelle and I the opportunity to work on projects and with partners that we choose and are passionate about. This year, I recognized that many of the students at Lakeside didn't have regular access to healthcare. Many of my friends would miss school for a few days when if they had visited the doctor, would have only missed one. I knew that there were school-based health clinics, but neither I nor my friends knew how to access them. My role was to bring together both the school and the community clinic to find a way to make the transportation that the district already provides work for Lakeside. We're now finalizing plans for next year that will allow many Lakeside students who exhibit signs of illness to visit the nurse. After a call home, the students will then be able to make an appointment at one of the school-based clinics and using a district-provided van, normally be able to see the doctor and get medicine the same day. I'm passionate about making sure that all of my peers have access to healthcare, and I'm able to work on that passion at Lakeside.
Thank you, guys. How awesome it is. This is straight out of current events that our kids are not just working on academic projects, but on things that are absolutely impacting our community right now, today. So, that is the end of our presentation. I understand that we have some students from some of the other schools. And thank you to Ms. Ryan and Walker Elementary for creating some spark quotes that I think they're going to come and give to each of you.
Thank you. How are you doing?
And thank you very much.
Thank you. So, what a beautiful presentation. That was great.
We just want to say thank you to each of the kids. Y'all have, each of the students, y'all are truly our spark. I mean, tonight, we have seen some amazing stories, and you're doing some amazing things. And we're very proud of each of you. And I know myself and the rest of the board are constantly amazed when a student comes up to speak to a room full of this many people and do it with grace and without a hiccup. And so, we're very proud of you. Pat yourself on the back, and you did a great job. Thank you.
Board, if you would turn to page 3 and remember, we're going to move Item 1 under D forward. Ms. Childress, thank you for your leadership in this area.
Thank you so much, Board and Dr. Rollins, for moving this item up and all...
Thank you so much, Board and Dr. Rollins, for moving this item up and also for giving me a chance to introduce to you some very, very talented students. It is not a surprise to you that we have an unlimited supply of talent in the Springdale School District, just some beautiful, beautiful children that are not only excelling academically, but in this case, in the arts. About 10 days ago, our city council PTA recognized over 50 students in our Springdale School District who won awards at the district level for their PTA Reflections Contest entries. And tonight, I'm going to bring to you those students who placed at the state level. We have 16 Springdale students who won state awards for PTA reflections. We had five first-place state awards, and we had winners in photography, literature, film, visual arts, dance choreography, and music. So, students, when I call your name for your award, if you will come forward and stand up front, if you happen to have brought your winning entry with you, you can go ahead and walk around and share those with our board members that are seated up front. And if you are on the PTA that that student represents, if you will please stand along with them, we would love to thank you for your hard work as well. So, our first category is photography. In the primary division, Adeline Castleman from Young had first place in the state with her piece, "The Emojis." Brayden Samples from Young Elementary had a state honorable mention for my brave ancestors. You can go closer, Adeline. They are so friendly.
That's really cool.
In intermediate photography, second place in the state Natalie Athie from Young Elementary with her work, "Friends." And Allison Athie, Young Elementary, placed honorable mention. In the high school division, Leanna Johnson from SOI placed third in the state with "The Girl in the Phone." Moving on to literature, in the high school division, Taylor Shrum from SOI placed second in the state with "Who Am I?" In film production, intermediate category, Bowman Miller from Tyson Elementary was a state honorable mention for his piece, "Within the Walls of Tyson." Kale Williams from Young Elementary was second in the state with the piece, "24 Hours in the Life of an Eighth Grade Football Player." And a special art award was given to Findley Hall from Young Elementary for the piece, "Atypical Beauty," and that was a first-place state winner. Yeah, come on. Come sit right here, buddy. Perfect. All lined up. Awesome. In visual arts, in the intermediate category, Lily Van Hook from Young Elementary placed second in the state. In dance choreography, intermediate level, Emmeline Johnson from George Elementary placed third in the state with the dance, "I Am the Same That Lives Within." And Isabella Wood from Young Elementary placed first in the state with the dance, "Inside of Us." In the category of music composition, Felix Nguyen from Tyson Elementary was first in the state with Felix's Happy Song. Leo Plumlee from Young Elementary was third in the state with the piece, "The Struggle." Perfect. I love that. You can sit right here. That's so perfect, Leo. Thank you. In intermediate, Willow Perez from Tyson Elementary was state honorable mention with her piece, "Anxiety." And Philip Lenzley from Smith Elementary was first in the state with the piece, "Sanfied," I think. That is extra creative on that one. So, and also, I hope we have some PTA members here also representing these schools. And boys and girls, we just want to thank you so much for representing the Springdale School District at the state level and for all of the things that you're doing to explore the arts. We love arts integration, and we appreciate you for all you're doing. And so, congratulations again on your state award. If there are parents... I don't have writing on my list. You want to help me out?
Olivia Wright.
Olivia Wright, come on up. Olivia. Olivia, what school do you represent? JB Hunt, and you won, tell us what you won at the state. Third place in what category? Literature. Awesome. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. And if we have any parents here with these wonderful students, if you will also stand so we can recognize you, because you had something to do with this too.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much, guys.
Great job.
Board, I believe we're back on page two of the agenda. I would move you to Item F and ask Mr. Donnell to come down. Damon will talk to us about our district social worker programs and recognition there, and then a new initiative in the district. Thank you, Mr. Donnell.
Thank you, Dr. Rollins. Thank you, board members. My name is Damon Donnell. I'm the Student Services Coordinator for the Springdale Public Schools. The month of March is National School, well, it's actually National Social Worker Month, but this last week was the School Social Worker Week. We would like to recognize our Springdale School social workers for the services that they provide for students, families, and district staff to support and promote each student's social and academic, or their academic and social well-being. Springdale Schools' social workers, they connect, they advocate, they resolve, and probably most importantly, they empower our families to take care of themselves in times of crisis. We are fortunate to have social workers in 21 of our 31 schools. And, Dr. Rollins, I want to thank you for your vision and your support of school social workers in the Springdale Public Schools. And at this time, I'd like to recognize our social worker staff. Where is Ms. Miller and Mrs.? So, I want to recognize, yeah, they're hiding from you guys. I'd like to recognize Ms. Mary Miller and Ms. Sarah Jones. They are absolutely fantastic. They help with training, supervision, just all sorts of things, very wonderful individuals. Also, Alina Anima. Where's Alina at? Alina is at HTMS in Tyson Elementary, Megan Group. She is at J.O. Kelly Middle School and Childress Knapp Elementary, Janet Hornberger. She is at Sonora Middle School and Barry Elementary, Letty Hug. She is at George Junior High School and George Elementary, or Raina Hart. Ms. Hart is at Monitor and Parson Hills. And Kimberly Polanco, Kimberlyn, Kimberlyn couldn't be here tonight. Denise Rodriguez. Denise is at Archer and Springdale High School. Tara Monholland. Tara is at Lakeside Junior High and Turnbull Elementary. And Grace Winner. Grace is at Smith Elementary and Westwood Elementary. And Jennifer Keeling. Jennifer is at Harbor High School and Sonora Elementary. And last but not least, our FIT coordinator, which is Ms. Lindsay Ogleman. She is at Elmdale Elementary, and the other portion of her job is our FIT liaison, which she coordinates all our families in transition. And I've asked Lindsay just to say a few words tonight.
Good evening. I have to say, with the Spark program, I feel like we definitely have some future social workers in the making, so that was really exciting. Again, my name is Lindsay Ogleman, and I'm a district social worker and the Families in Transition Liaison, and we serve families that are experiencing homelessness. So, social workers in the district, we serve our families in many capacities, from food, clothing, community resources, to emotional support and mental health. An overview of the services that we've provided so far this year is on the slides. One of the populations that we've really focused on is our families that are experiencing homelessness. We work to identify these families and provide them with support. As of yesterday, we have identified 455 students that are currently enrolled in Springdale Schools that have experienced homelessness this school year. To put that in perspective, that's about 2% of our student population. We would again like to take this opportunity to thank the board and Dr. Rollins for your overwhelming support for the social work program.
Board members, do you have any questions you'd like to ask?
I just want each of you to know how grateful we are for you. I mean, we didn't have social workers when we were, when I was in school, and now that you're here and the amazing work that you're doing, I can't imagine it without you. And each of our schools are experiencing so many different things, and you are just filling that gap, and you are helping these families in an amazing way. And I'm just grateful for each of you, thankful for your work with our students.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
If I could get Dr. Ferguson and, I think, Mr. Dophy. Yeah, we're not going to hand these out. Safety is one of our four pillars in the Springdale School District. Ensuring school safety is a collective responsibility of staff, students, parents, and community. In Springdale, we are continuing to build on our culture of safety by implementing our, the Department of Homeland Security's "If You See Something, Say Something" campaign and revising established safety protocols. So, what you have here in front of you is, we used to have a flip chart that had all of our safety protocols on it, and we're actually calling this our Emergency Procedure Quick Chart. So, this is our new protocol. This will be on cardstock, laminated, professionally printed, and it'll have a hole right here in the middle to where it'll be hung on this side, "See Something, Say Something," for every teacher. So, we'll replace the 1,800 flip charts that we have with these safety quick charts. Yes, you can really go wrong saying that too many times, I promise you. So, I'll say, "If You See Something, Say Something" allows our students to confidentially report, this is in your packet also, so it'll allow students to confidentially report any concerns they have about inappropriate behavior from the comfort of their computer or their phone. So, you can take your phone out right now and use your cellphone to, any cellphone camera will read this QR code. It'll actually provide a link, and that link will then be a reporting process where students can then report their concerns. I've shared this with principals, and they've, I've asked them to give me a list. Right now, it goes to just principals, but if they'd like it to go to counselors or whatever building-specific, it will also do that. I'd like to recognize Dr. Rollins and Dr. Cleveland for their leadership and vision in district safety. And I want to say, this C-Say is about developing a culture about doing the right thing, okay? I remember one time, a student reported something, and, you know, it was about that conversation, about that feeling of doing the right thing and making things better for everybody else around them. And I remember that student kind of having that aha moment, which was a really inspiring thing for me, very passionate about that. I'd like to thank Dr. Rollins and Dr. Cleveland for their leadership and vision. It takes a specific vision to really think about school safety for 23,000 students and then all of the other district staff that we have. I'd like to also thank our District Safety Committee, okay? So, that's one person generally from each building. We meet quarterly to talk about district safety and revise things. And then I'd also like to thank Dr. Ferguson. Make sure I'm not missing anybody here. Dr. Ferguson, Misty Harrison, Mr. Tom Dophy, Officer Tree, Officer Gregory, Trent Jones, Missy Martinez, that's sitting right over there. She's behind the scenes a lot, but she has a lot to do with a lot of things for their work on the current initiatives that we have in front of us. This was a group effort to really push this forward and get this moving in the right direction. During fourth quarter, we'll move to teach our students, in the district, about this. We're going to have these posters printed. It'll be electronic and paper copies of this. We'll have, Trent Jones is going to work on videos on, "Did you know that you can report?" And, "Did you know that you can do this?" And, you know, little info videos about that. And I think it's just, it's encouraging to me that we'll continue this culture of safety in our district and really build upon what has already been built here. I encourage you to scan the QR codes with your phone camera and, or go to go.esdell.org/csay. They go to the exact same place, it's just two different ways to go there, so that you can experience the new system. We are very excited about continuing this culture forward with safety, and if you have any questions at this time, we'd love to answer them.
How are we sharing this with our parents?
So, this will be shared on social media, it'll be shared out through, in the school building during, well, we were going to do it for Parent Teacher Conference and things just didn't work out for that. But yes, we'll be sharing it out through social media, through, just through the schools. We'll have little cards for next year. We're talking about how kids wear IDs. Let me show you this. It's kind of a nifty idea. So, imagine this on a business card. So, each kid that gets their ID next year, this will already be in their ID, a little business card that says, "C-Say," with how to go, where to go, the scanning piece and all of that. Good question. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate you.
As you know, in April, we'll have about a half-day work session, and so there's a corrected and revised agenda. I was just telling our social workers, literacy, numeracy, the social well-being of our children are the foundations that would build our school system on. So, we will add to that and look forward to that work session in April, on April 14th. I would also, I'm going to hand out for your review, and I think it's important, given the circumstances that are going on in our country and frankly, in the world today, I'm going to give you a copy of a document that Dr. Smith and the instructional team has done great work on. This, like so many things we do, we will continue to write, refine, and improve in case we ever need it. But this is an alternative methods instruction plan, and I think at that work session, we'll find time to talk about that, and the board may have suggestions for improving that as well. But again, special thanks to Dr. Smith and the Division of Instruction for bringing this forward. So, I'm just looking at your topic there. Y'all look at, show the conference board.
Thank you, yes.
Other questions? If you could, I can help with this evening. Thank you very much, Board. Let's move forward then to the next item on the agenda. Marcia, if you'd come forward, we'll have the instruction.
Good evening, Dr. Rollins, Board.
Good evening, Dr. Rollins Board. It was a great event this afternoon, Dr. Rollins, and it was a great celebration to see all those students and know that they're going to enjoy those fields for a long time. So thank you.
That was fun, it sure was.
I have two items on my agenda. The first one, last month, Ms. Morgan came forward and talked a little bit about the assessment cycle, and I wanted to just bring that forward again to your attention and just identify a couple other things. First of all, today, all 11th grade students across the state of Arkansas took the ACT Aspire. Keep in mind that when they graduate, their 12th grade scores and some form of that is what is used for their ESSA report, and it's also what is used for the ACT profile for our district. So this year's ACT scores will be reflected next year. The other thing that we have happening, April 6th through May 8th, so we have a couple weeks break, we will be doing the ACT Aspire grades through six, excuse me, three through 10. Keep in mind, that's every building in our district with the exception of pre-K. So they will be very busy preparing their students and administering the ACT Aspire. The other things that I wanted to bring to your attention are the AP exams, IB exams, and NWA concurrent exams. And these are the exams that if students score at a certain level, actually earn them college credit. So the AP exam, and you can see it in the handout on pages 27 through 37, that they'll be given the AP exams between May 4th and May 25th, and that's roughly around 29 different exams. So that's something to be mindful of. And then we have the IB exam. The IB exam is only offered at Springdale High School, and it's multiple, multiple, multiple exams per child that they'll be taking. And then the concurrent exams are May 2nd through May 8th, and that's kind of a little different because they give us the deadlines that they have to be taken, and the students take them, and then they have to have them during this time period of our school, but they give us timelines that they have to be administered and turned back into NWA. So those are the assessment cycles. Any questions about that? Today was a very, very busy day for our secondary schools. I do want to point out that the AP exams are given in all of our junior highs as well. So it's a junior high and high school assessment. So I found this saying, and I thought it was pretty profound, and I just wanted to share it with you. There's a way to do it better. Find it. Notice it's not a question, it's a statement. Because if you think about anything that happens in our lives, there's probably a way that we could look at and make it better. And that's kind of what our district does. We do amazing things, and so it's always a challenge for us to say, what is it we can do to make things better? I visited two schools recently. One of them was J.O. Kelly Middle School as they were showing their RTI program. Phenomenal. Second, I mean, it was just unbelievable. They have drilled down to every single student and provided support for every student at the level at which they needed. The other school that I visited with Shaw, we had a group of individuals come through, and I spent the morning there today. The opportunities that we are providing for students in our district are amazing. The idea that students have choice, voice, they're tying curriculum to the arts and bringing in robotics, all in one activity, pretty amazing. And I know you've guys seen that, but I just am always very fortunate. The reason I bring that up is because we, as a district, really do set the stage for Arkansas. Our goal is always to push and make it better. So at the very beginning of the year, Dr. Rollins really establishes the vision and the culture for our district. And it's not something that we do just at the beginning of the year. It is something that we do throughout the year. So we have things called Springdale Leadership Academies. We've, this year has been a little bit different than past years because we've had so much state-required PD. But what we've done is we brought the principals, assistant principals, instructional facilitators, instructional specialists, and teachers on special assignment. We have approximately 178 people that participated in this. We divided it into a morning session and an afternoon session. I have to stop at this moment and said, well, Ms. Tischer, Ms. Childress, and I planned this event. Ms. Tischer and Ms. Childress delivered it, and they did amazing. Ladies, you did amazing, so thank you. So I'm the one that just gets to share it, so. But the idea is going back to our focus on start with why. We've launched a new logo with the center as a Y. We've moved forward, and there is a very brief agenda here that you'll see. But I want to take you to this slide that I know we've seen a few times, which is the staircase to educational excellence. But the reason I wanted to bring it up was for this specific thing. In the summer, Dr. Rollins had a whole bunch of books laid out on his desk. He had Wetrick, which you've heard about tonight, Kyros, which you've heard about tonight. We've had A.J. Giuliani, Spencer, and I can go back to Fulham and a whole bunch of different people. And he had all of them laid down, and he says, "If you look at all these things and really focus it, it matches beautifully what we have, which is our vision for Springdale." And so if you'll notice those items along the bottom, which we spend little time, growth, stretching, clarifying, if you go down, those are all the different authors that have just recently come forward that are putting new things. And those things are what are driving the changes that you're seeing in the school. We just got through Tyson's, and you saw all the different things they're doing there. And so it's this idea that it's not something else, it's what we're currently doing and making it better. So that's why you'll see those things on the bottom of the staircase, so pretty powerful. So from that, we started with our leadership team talking about a power of culture. And we started talking about past, present, and future. And what we did is we did an activity with the administrators that said, "Take a moment, and based on these things, where are you in the continuum of your school?" Because we know all schools are at different places and different things. So we did an activity, which I'll show you in just a minute. Then we talked about what is required to be innovative. And the idea was, it takes courage. And I actually heard that today, somebody at the event this afternoon talked about, it takes courage. Because, you know, if things are going pretty well, why not just keep the status quo? It takes courage to be able to step outside and say, what is it that we can do to actually make things better? So we had some reflection on that. And then we came back, the strategic plans in our district are what drives a school's movement and all the different things that they're doing. And so we spent some time talking about how these connect. So the idea is, we moved all this year, moving forward with the same, with the same vision. I'm going to say something that Ms. Tischer said earlier, and I'm going to repeat this, and you'll probably hear this repeated for the next two years, but really, this event is not just about getting information, but it's really about the culture of collaboration, so that we're building this collaborative unit within our district. And it's also about continuous learning for everybody involved. I learn as I process with Ms. Tischer and Ms. Childress, and I know that the principals and leads do the same thing. This is the last slide that I just want to leave you with, and I am going to read this, but this is really where we're pushing toward. But if you'll look at where learning is on the staircase to educational excellence, we are so far past that, and we are still focusing on the learner and not necessarily the school structures. So the first one, promote starting for, by looking for answers. But learning is really about starting with questions. School is about consuming. Learning is about creating. Shaw was an amazing example of that today, in every way, shape, and form. School is about finding information on something that's been prescribed for you. Learning is about exploring your passions and interests. School teaches compliance. Learning is about challenging perceived norms. School is about scheduled at certain times, but as we all know, it can happen at any time and all the time. Sometimes in school it isolates, but learning really is a social event, and you guys see that as you're walking through the halls all the time in our buildings. School is standardized, learning is personal. School is teaching us to obtain information from certain people. And look what learning is. It promotes that everyone is a teacher and everyone is a learner. School is about giving up information, giving you information, excuse me, and learning is about making your own connections. School is sequential, but really, learning is random and nonlinear. And then school promotes surface learning thinking, and learning is about deep exploration. So we talked about our principals on this continuum, but what I am so thankful for as I walk in the buildings, I see that this shift, and this has just recently come out, that this shift of learning that is just now happening across the nation, we've been settled in that learning phase for a very long time. So we don't lose sight of it, but it was a great time with our administrators, and we know we see this in all of our schools daily. So anyway, that was a great day. You have any questions on that?
Good job.
Ms. Tischer is now going to come forward about grades six through 12.
Okay, I have so much exciting news for you all tonight. First up, on my section of the agenda, you might remember back in October when we talked about the National Merit semifinalist process, and we had the National Merit semifinalists here, and you may recognize their pictures. I am so happy to say that all four of them, and I'll bring them up in just a minute, one by one, all four of them have now been named the prestigious National Merit finalists. This is huge. So just to provide some context, these students took the PSAT exam in October of their 11th grade year. The scores that they received are basically, they had to be in the top 0.5% of the entire nation's junior class to be named a semifinalist, based on their performance on that exam. Once they were named semifinalist, they then enter a very rigorous process to try and become a National Merit finalist. That process entails completing an application, having a consistently high GPA, writing an essay, they have to be endorsed by a school official, and then they also have to take the SAT to prove that their performance does in fact put them in that category of achievement. These students were just notified last month, in February, that they have achieved finalist status. And basically, now that they are finalists, there are three types of scholarships that are associated with National Merit. If they accept, so there's a corporate-sponsored merit scholarship, the National Merit scholarship, and then a college-sponsored merit scholarship. Once a student accepts a scholarship, they are named a National Merit Scholar. So now all they have to do is accept the money, and so we're pretty excited. I'm going to introduce them one by one, and then I'm going to allow them to take any questions that you may have and talk to you about where they want to go next after high school. I'll introduce Oliver, could not be here this evening, but the first is Oliver Mammy. He's from DT SOI, and he is the son of Andy and Judy Mammy. And he started going to DT SOI as a ninth grader and has continued his path there until he is his senior year this year. So even though he's not here, if we could give him a round of applause. Next, I would like to introduce Ms. Sarah Manos, also a student at DT SOI. She is the daughter of Matt and Don Manos. She attended Walker Elementary, Helen Tyson Middle School, Southwest Junior High, and Don Tyson School of Innovation. Next, we have Ms. Claire Franco from Harbor High School. She is the daughter of John and Monica Franco, and she has attended Young Elementary, Hellstone Middle School, Central Junior High, and Harbor High School. And then we have Mr. Samuel Lonnaman, son of Conrad and Heather Lonnaman. He has attended Hunt Elementary, Hellstone Middle School, Central Junior High, and Harbor High School. Okay, I'm just going to let them take turns fielding any questions you may have, and then just let them quickly tell you what their next steps are.
Hi, do you have any questions for me?
Why don't you tell us what your next steps are?
So, yeah, after I graduate in May, I'm planning on going to MIT in the fall, actually. So I've been accepted there, and I'm really excited for what that will bring for me.
And what do you want to study?
Biochemistry, yes.
So you were in Dubai, how long ago was that?
That was in October.
So Dubai, MIT, just normal 18-year-old lifestyle, right?
Yeah, I mean, I do it a lot, but it wouldn't have been possible without, like, all the support that I've gotten from the other students and the faculty at Springdale Public School. So thank you so much for everything. I couldn't have done it without all of you.
Hello. What questions can I answer? Oh, just, okay, yeah. I'm going to attend Hendrix in the fall. I actually just accepted my application a few days ago, and then I'll see what happens after that. I don't have a specific major yet, but I do plan to attend law school afterwards. So they have a social justice minor that I'm really interested in because I really care about civil work and human rights and social rights. So I want to definitely do something in law with that, move into policy, and, I don't know, maybe be president in 2040, so.
I'm Sam. I plan to go to the University of Florida next year, and I'll go in as mechanical engineering. I might come out somewhere else, but definitely engineering. Florida, a big draw to Florida is just its engineering school ranking. It's a really great engineering school, combined with the National Merit Scholarship that they do offer. I just, I couldn't not take that offer.
So what determines what scholarship you're offered?
So with National Merit, individual colleges have their own policy for what they'll give you. So some schools recognize it a lot, some schools don't, they don't give you much for it, but Florida, they give quite a bit. So I was excited to find that out because of their engineering school.
Sure your parents are happy about that?
They are.
And you're all going to accept the scholarships, right?
So exciting.
Congratulations.
Okay, I know we mentioned parents, but if you're here, can you please stand? Any of their parents that are here?
Appreciate you guys, thank you so much.
Do you know what percentage are finalists? You said 0.5 are semi, right?
Yeah, it's 0.1% of the nation's graduating class.
Are finalists?
It is a very small percentage of the entire nation's graduating class. And as you can see for their future plans, you can understand why they were in that top tier. Yes. Okay, so next on the agenda, in your packet on pages 44 and 45, I've included the actual press release from the governor's office, but this year will actually be the third school year that the governor has an AP Computer Science incentive plan. And what that means is, students who take Computer Science A, if they take that AP exam, the governor actually offers a cash incentive for their performance because the exam is incredibly, incredibly difficult. And so if a student scores a five on the AP Computer Science A exam, they receive $1,000 in cash, and their school receives $250. If they score a four, the student receives $750, and the school receives $150. And then if they score a three, the student receives $250, and the school receives $50. So I'm happy to say that this school year, we have students who, last May, per So I'm happy to say that this school year, we have students who, last May, performed a scoring threes and fours on the Computer Science A exam, and they have received their incentive dollars. And some of them have already graduated, but some of them are here, and I wanted to just recognize them and their teachers. So for Springville High School, the teacher, Ms. Josefina Perez, this is kind of ironic, she actually couldn't be here because she's leading the study session for the CSA exam right now. They do that every Tuesday, preparing for this exam to hopefully have more students achieve this incentive. And so she had three students, and I know one of them, Ramiro Gonzalez, I believe is here. Not yet, okay. Ramiro scored a four, Oscar Kuskin, he scored a four, and then Logan Webb scored a three. So I guess they, none of them could make it. I know Logan and Oscar graduated already. And then for Harbor High School, Jonah Lesh, he scored a three. He also graduated in May of 19. The teacher for Harbor High School, Ms. Lindsay Trahan, could not be here this evening. She is preparing to have a baby, like today is having a baby. And so she couldn't make it for that reason. That's good reason. And then for Don Tyson School of Innovation, we have Mr. John Redfern. Mr. Redfern, if you would come on up, he is the instructor. And then we have James Cassidy, who scored a four. And I know the Cassidys are here this evening, parents, if you all can give a wave. Yay. And then, and then we have Benjamin Easterling, and he is here, and he also scored a four. And then Benjamin, do we have parents or family with Benjamin that we can stand and recognize?
Yeah, they're doing renovations.
They're doing renovations, okay. Sounds great. So I'm going to quickly let them, Mr. Redfern, just maybe just give a quick statement about the complexity of this exam, and then if you all would like to ask them any questions, you're more than welcome.
Hey, thank you. I'm John Redfern. I teach at the Don Tyson School of Innovation. I was a IT professional before I got into education to teach computer science, and I can tell you that there are many computer professionals today working, you know, for Walmart, Tyson, J.B., who would struggle to score a three, four, or five on this exam. It is that comprehensive. So hats off to all the individuals who have accomplished that. You know, I feel like my role with students like these young men is just provide them with an environment to excel on their own terms, and they've certainly done that. So I'm going to let them talk a little bit about themselves. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm Bryant. I'm a senior at the Don Tyson School of Innovation. I can go a little bit after college, or after high school. I plan to go to Rice University and major in computer science, was accepted this past fall. Yeah, me and Ben are also both on School of Innovation's computer science team. We won the Tyson Hackathon last year and made it to state, made it to the state coding competition, and we're competing that again this year.
Awesome.
Hello, I'm Ben, as I've already been introduced. So a little bit of my after-high school plans. Currently, I'm interning at Tyson. It's a fantastic opportunity. I've got a lot of real-world experience programming and working on code that is actually in production at Tyson today. And my after-high school plans are hopefully continue that internship at Tyson and go to the University of Arkansas, majoring in computer science.
I'm curious what your bet's going to do with the money?
What did you do?
Or what did you do with the money?
Oh, yeah. I saved it. I just, it's just in my bank account, yeah. Not very interesting. College.
College.
Impressive.
What year are you?
I'm a senior.
Senior, okay.
Do either of you have any advice for someone getting ready to take the class or getting ready to take the test?
So if you're getting ready to take the class, I would say this class is a lot more theoretical. So if you have experienced programming, you might think, you know, it's going to be super easy. I definitely did. However, it, you know, I would say it's harder than you'd think, so, yeah, just be prepared.
Yeah, it's not like a lot of classes where you can just, like, study a bunch, like, from a textbook and do it. You kind of have to get in there and start programming and, like, really learn those fundamentals behind programming if you're going to do well, so, yeah.
So is the exam like a hands-on thing?
Yeah, you have to, yeah, it's multiple choice, and then you actually hand-write code, which is an interesting experience.
Yeah.
Hand-writing code, got it.
Great job.
That's your world.
Thank you.
Very proud.
Okay, for our next item on the agenda, this is such a pleasure to recognize these two teams from our district, from Sonora Middle School and George Junior High. They have participated in the Samsung Solve for Tomorrow competition, and I'm actually going to let them come up and tell you about it. But I want to let you know that they were both selected as Arkansas finalists, which guaranteed each of their teams $15,000 in technology from Samsung. George Junior High has just been named the Arkansas overall state winner, which guarantees them $50,000. And they get to go on a trip to New York City to compete for the national award, which would be five teams, and they would receive $100,000 for their team. And so if Ms. Eads and Ms. Dodson would like to come up, just come on up and introduce, yep, I'm going to have you each bring up your teams. And Ms. Dodson, I'm going to let you go first. Dr. Dodson, I'm sorry, not Ms., doctor, go ahead.
It's just Martha. I would like to have Holly Pennington and Kara Conklin and Ashen Princeton come up, and their amazing teacher, which is Derek Ratchford. And I just really want them to talk about this. I love this project, and these ladies have so much, so much time and so much, they're just going to be able to take this and run with it. And so I really appreciate the board for giving us some opportunity this evening to bring them, and at this age, they already had the courage to be able to come up with this brilliant idea. And so I want you to tell them, tell them about your idea.
Tell them what you want to do.
Yes. I'm short, okay. I'm Holly Pennington. So when we first came into East, we kind of were lost, and we didn't know what to do. But our teacher, actually, Mr. Watkins, he's a foster parent, and so he came up to us and told us about these meetings that Project Zero has, and how there's only a board with pictures of these children. And so we said, well, that could be our project and make it to where parents have more information about the kids. And we started to do that with augmented reality. And so it was really cool, and we spent a long time trying to work out all the kinks in it. But eventually, it worked out well for us, so.
What she doesn't know is that was easily the most powerful moment I've ever had as an educator. Yes, they won a lot of money, but what happened to get them there is we had two students, through the brainstorming session, stand up and announce to the class that they are in foster care. And they had the courage to talk a little bit about their struggles and kind of the hardships that they were going through. And they, one of the girls specifically said, I just wish I could, I could tell my story and show who I am to any potential parent. And we need a way that we're more than just a picture and a book, we're on a website. And these girls found a way to do it through augmented reality. It's pretty special.
So what does that look like, augmented reality? What does that look like?
So if you have a binder with photos in it, if you take, like, your phone or a tablet, you can scan that photo, and it pops up a video on the screen that is that child speaking and about why they deserve to be adopted and what it would mean to them to have a family.
So are you tagging in, I follow Project Zero, are you tagging in the videos, like if they normally do? Is that what's popping up, or have?
And we've also created, or they created their own as well, for the students in our school.
That's really cool. And it's, your project's actively being used right now, right? That's really cool.
We're pretty proud of them, things we get to do in East.
If any of their parents are here tonight, we'd love for you to stand.
This is the great thing about working in Springville, I just have to say. So many opportunities to see student engagement and see real community connection. Very exciting. Thank you.
Good work.
See, powerful stuff, way more powerful if they tell you. Ms. Eads, if you want to introduce your instructor and your team.
So last year, I think at least one, maybe two of these team members were here to show you how they did their virtual reality in the shots. Remember, the little kids got the shots and they had no idea? So I think they used some of the stuff that they won in order to continue to go. That's kind of the point of Samsung, is to get that stuff into kids so that they can continue to build on it. And so I'm going to introduce Mr. Beard and then his team, and then they'll, do we have the video, Melissa, to show what they did this year?
So you may remember most of us from last year as eighth graders, when we were a state winner, and we came and we shrunk Mr. Hutchinson for our virtual reality project, and so now we're back.
So the Solve for Tomorrow competition is a challenge to students to use STEM to solve problems in their community, which is basically what we're already doing in East. Unfortunately, we didn't make nationals last year, but we didn't let that get us down. We came back this year and used what we learned from last year, and we tried even harder. So we have been named national finalists and have won at least $50,000 in technology for our schools.
Because of our success last year, we decided to do another virtual reality project this year, and the goal of our project is to use VR to help veterans and other amputees who are experiencing phantom limb pains after an amputation. And we have brought a video that demonstrates our project that we'd like to share with you.
During the Afghanistan and Iraq wars, 1,650 U.S. troops in the military lost limbs while serving their country. Our town, Springville, Arkansas, was named a Purple Heart City in honor of the number of veterans from our community who were wounded in the line of service. Arkansas ranks as one of the highest states in rate of amputation. Phantom limb pain is a condition that can occur after having a limb amputated. This is not a rare condition. 72% of people will experience phantom limb pains after having an amputation.
We want to honor our veterans and help many others by creating a virtual reality experience to help with phantom pains.
We met with Sammy Beckman, the Director of Physical Therapy Education at NWhac. She taught us about phantom limb pains and mirror therapy.
Something that if nobody talks to you about, it's obviously very scary, you feel crazy, right? That you're like, I'm positive I feel my toes, and, you know, mentally they know that they don't. Some patients will suffer for years with it. How mirror therapy works, it will override that signal and say, there is nothing wrong. Here is your normal limb, it is working, it's fine, you still have it, it's good. The whole thing that makes this, to me, one of the most important things, is that you said they could put their phone in VR and do it for 20 bucks. That's amazing. It's affordable, they can access it, and they can do it at home.
Using the techniques we learned from Mrs. Beckman, we have created a virtual reality experience to help relieve the symptoms of phantom limb pains. The virtual reality experience walks the person through a variety of exercises designed to activate the nerves and reduce the pain they are having. When the person looks down in the virtual reality, it gives them the illusion of the return of their missing limb to help trick the brain and activate the damaged nerves.
We met with Scott West, the Outdoor Adventure Coordinator for Sheepdog Impact Assistance.
So I drove the wheel of life to take the bus on my side of the truck. When I drove the wheel, it got even off. It was not one, one ides, it was three ides. So it blew over about eight feet wide, about seven foot deep.
Today, Scotty travels around the country, giving hope and inspiration to other veterans and first responders who were injured in service.
Well, I've been with him for about five years, and I've coached about 38 outdoor adventures a year, and was sponsored by 6785 last year.
Scotty tried out our prototype and gave us valuable feedback. After finishing the improvements, we traveled to the University of Arkansas's indoor track to share our final prototype with Hunter Woodhall.
Well, that was weird, because I moved at the same time as him. I thought it was my LA, I'm not even lying. It doesn't sleep. Like, I could see how it could help really quickly. So it's really cool.
We are continuing to work to improve our prototype and hope that our work will help those who are experiencing this condition in our community and around the country.
Vanessa and I will be traveling to New York City at the end of the month to compete against the other national finalists remaining in the competition. We've already won at least $50,000 for technology, but if we place in the top five, we will win $100,000 instead. There is also a vote being held at samsung.com/solve, where the project with the most votes will win a Community Choice Award of an extra $10,000. So be sure to vote for us.
How often can we vote? Is it a vote once and you're done, or can you vote every day?
Every day, once a day.
We would like to conclude by thanking Scott West, Sammy Beckman, and Hunter Woodhall for helping us with our project. All the time that they took to help us, and they didn't expect anything in return, we wouldn't have been able to do it without them, and they helped us receive at least $50,000, but we're hoping $100,000 in new technology for our schools. So thanks once again to them.
Way to go.
Top five will win $100,000.
The week after spring break, we'll be going to New York.
Congratulations.
The final item on my segment of the agenda is I'm going to let Dr. Davis come up with Christina Holloman, again, you met her, she is the student representative from Archer this evening, to talk about her being named the 2020 Diamond Award winner by the Arkansas Association for Alternative Education. And I just have to say, had I known that she was mommy tonight, I would have put her all of this at one time. I did not realize that she had already had her son, and so she has been here as a mom all night waiting for this segment on the agenda. And so I just wanted to point that out because I'm super, super proud of her. And so I will let Dr. Davis conclude my segment.
I was going to say, we all want to share it.
It's been super fun, everyone competing over who gets to hold him. So Dr. Smith won in the end. But no, the Diamond Award, each year, the legislation invites all of alternative ed to Little Rock to come and recognize a few students for different things. But the Diamond Award, as a diamond is, it starts out rough, and if it's polished and shaved just correctly, then it becomes this beautiful stone. And so they recognize students who have had challenges or adversity in their lives and have overcome those things and been very successful. And Christina obviously emulates that award, someone who has had lots of challenges, you know, being raised by her grandmother, obviously having a new child and still trying to finish high school, and still being able to be successful and have plans and goals for herself. And so even the state of Arkansas recognized her as someone who is truly a diamond.
Christina's planning not to speak again.
How did she find out?
Well, so each year we have to submit, um, someone that we think might represent what the state is looking for. And so they invite us to Little Rock and then they give those awards. We actually just went to Little Rock, Little Rock yesterday. So Christina not only is here all night tonight, but she drove all the way to Little Rock yesterday to win this award and, and drove back. And Dorian went with us yesterday as well, so he is a real trooper. Yeah, he has gotten to see all kinds of things the last few days.
We're incredibly proud of you.
Board, we're now on the item two on page, what, four? No, what?
Three.
Three.
Yes, so I am here to now recognize some amazing teachers. We have very talented students, but we also have very, very talented teachers. And so we had several Springdale Elementary teachers who received their National Board certification in December. National Board certification is the most respected professional certification available in K-12 education. The process requires that teachers demonstrate standards-based evidence of the positive effect they have on student learning in alignment with a deep understanding of their students, content knowledge, use of data and assessments, and teaching practice. They must also show that they participate in learning communities and provide evidence of ongoing reflection and continuous learning. And I would like to introduce those teachers to you. And I can tell you, it is hard, 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 hard work over many months, many weeks, many, many hours. And so this is truly just a very, very special accomplishment. From our pre-case center, Brittany Sissel and Kara Maxwell come on up. From Bayori, Connie Neely, Jennifer Spears, and Karen Cleaver. From George, Heather Miller and Sally Newton. From HARP, Jana Johnson. From JB Hunt, Stephanie Tucker. From Jones Elementary, Megan Ben, Jennifer Cash, and Erin Fisher. From Monitor, Kim Van Factor. From Parson Hills, Amy Ritchie. From Sonora, Megan Spalding. Lydia Morris, Jennifer Worthy, and Carrie Spurlock. From Turnbo, Tracy Whelan. From Tyson, Will Smith. From Westwood, Ann Richards, and Kristen Thomas. Congratulations to all of these teachers. Would one of you like to tell the board what you received for being National Board certified? Anybody?
Well, some of us will receive $5,000 if you work in a school that is a, um, not a high poverty school, but we are a high poverty district. If you work at a school that's high poverty and high poverty district, you get $10,000.
And many of these teachers also have parents here tonight or family members, friends, principals, assistant principals who are supporting them. So you are welcome to stand up and be recognized too because you've been waiting for this special moment. Yes, Mr. Schaefer would like all of you to follow him out the front door to the steps for a group photo. Thank you and congratulations.
That's for, it's, it's for five years every year, right?
Yes, for five years. Okay, now I'm going to give you our monthly Roots update. Um, I put this at each of your, um, seats today. And this gives you just a little bit of information about our phonics curriculum. I know some of you have had questions about, um, what we use, how long we have been using it. And so we have, this is our K-2 Phonics and Phonology curriculum. Tier one instruction, which is just what happens for every single student in the classroom. Our district adoption is phonetic connections. Phonetic connections was adopted during the 2015-2016 school year. Training was provided to instructional facilitators and teachers in 2015 when we adopted. And additional training occurred through lab classes in 2016, 17, and 18 to help strengthen our teachers' use of phonetic connections. Tier two instruction, which would be intervention and also dyslexia instruction. Um, our district curriculum is phonics first. Phonics first professional development is provided by our co-op. It's a five-day training. It's very extensive because phonics first is used for those students that are struggling to learn to read. Every school in the district has at least one phonics first facilitator. And you can see in the middle is Hegarty. One thing, um, as we learn more and get better when it comes to teaching reading, we know that there is no perfect curriculum. All of the curriculum, um, that is available have some kind of gap. And sometimes even maybe the order that they're presented isn't the best order for learning to read. And so Hegarty is what we use to fill the gap for both tier one and tier two instruction. And our schools began using Hegarty as a resource during the 2018-2019 school year to fill the gaps. And our instructional facilitators support teachers with professional development in that as needed. So that's just a little bit of information for you about our phonics curriculum. If you ever want to take a look at phonetic connections or phonics first, we can get you some kits to browse through. I know in some of the school board luncheons that you've been attending this year, you've gotten to see, um, some phonics work um, that could be from one of those two or from Hegarty. Um, and if you have any more questions about the curriculum, I would be happy to, um, to answer you and get you any information needed. Since our last board meeting, we have recognized six more fantastic teachers that have just jumped in and are doing a great job with, um, putting their Roots training into action. And the thing that I, one of the things that I love about this award is these teachers were nominated by their peers because their peers recognize them as teachers that are not only teaching students, but are also teaching the adults in their building and helping their grade level in their school to get stronger. And, um, I, I love it. When we, um, when we go to schools and they see us coming down the hall with the balloons and the sign, teachers start running down or looking at the door because they know where the award is going, um, to, to a teacher that really makes a difference for them. So I would like to introduce to you Melinda Bain from George, Christina Lyle from Shaw, Kylie Pinalto from Turnbo, Julie Knight from Sonora, Rhonda Emerson from Tyson, and Teresa Jordan from HARP. And you all do not have to say anything at all if you do not want to. But if you would like to, um, say something quickly about, um, how the Roots training is, has impacted your instruction or, um, the results you see from your students, we would love to hear from you. Otherwise, we will just celebrate you, whatever you would like. Congratulations. Thank you so much for your great work. And there's the picture of them with their celebrations. Sorry.
You know what I'd love to see? I'd love to see those principals get up here. Teachers are all up here. It's like they're their children. And they're so excited and they're taking their pictures and they're just fired up. I'd love to see that. I really do. Well, I've got about 11 things to talk to you about. I'll try to go through them pretty quickly. The first three or four, I can go pretty rapidly. Okay, Ms. Creek? Uh, today, not to recap, but we had a great celebration at Harbor. We're looking forward to a similar celebration to open up Springdale High's baseball and softball athletic facilities, Dr. Rollins. So that's going to be on the 16th at 4:00. I believe he's already, uh, put that out to you. So, Mr. Bell, if you don't have that information on the 16th, we'll send you a lot. Dr. Smith is outstanding at calendar invites. So just getting ready to be blown up. Absolutely. Okay. So we're looking forward to that. Parson Hills next Friday on the 20th at 9:00 AM. The school-based health centers, as you saw tonight, touch this community deeply.
Yes.
And so our effort, Dr. Rollins' effort, your effort to continue with the school-based health center model in Springdale, I think is foundational for our future and for our kids' future. So that's just my side. It's one of my favorite things to get to be part of. And I'm thankful that I, I get to plan with you for those future events. Okay. Anybody get my video today of Springdale? Okay, SOI face two. Those are cool. The music are a little hokey, but, uh, I really enjoy those. I didn't show them to you tonight because of the comments I received last time about the music. So I'll just send those to you, uh, in the future. Uh, no more of those. Interesting, interesting thing today, uh, this last week, we had, had an issue with the Rave Panic Button at SHS. All of you are aware. Met with, uh, gentlemen from Rave Friday at 1:30. And, um, they've done some backwards looking at how all of that worked. And I've got a report for Dr. Rollins and I'll provide that to him and he'll, I'm sure he'll send that to you this next week. But it, it looks like everything worked as it was supposed to. The interesting part of the Rave Panic Button system in the future, the governor's office and the state will not support it financially anymore. So if Rave or any other kind of system, panic system is implemented in any district, it will be at the district cost. So, uh, Dr. Rollins is working on that. I think he's, well, Dr. Rollins is going to be Dr. Rollins and work on those kinds of things and communicate with the powers that be. And we're looking forward to some sort of resolution. But if not, uh, I've negotiated a relative, well, a really good price, a reduced price with more opportunities, a dashboard and other things, uh, for this next year. So we'll see how that goes. Uh, hopefully we can get that, uh, reinstituted by the state. But if not, we'll still have a great opportunity to, uh, continue with. I think it's very necessary. So, and I, I know you do, yeah, with public safety as well. Okay. Our intents to return in the area personnel went out electronically this last week. Everyone should have their intent to return done. It took about two seconds, three seconds, something like that, by the 13th of this month. So Dr. Rollins will have a report for us, uh, this next month about how many will be retiring, how many won't be coming back. And we'll know what kind of work we have in front of us. Also, next month, you'll receive a resolution to, uh, begin that hiring. Already have requests from these principals. They are high achievers. They already know some people are leaving and they're already wanting to rehire or refill those positions. Just Monday, we visited in our central office leadership meeting about an opportunity to hire faster, faster, uh, MAT graduates from the University of Arkansas. So as we pool together, we're going to try to cream the top if we can, uh, to try to, to implement a, a new idea around here and actually an old idea, new again. If we can anticipate the, um, number of vacancies that we have and try to grab those people first. It may not be a school. We may not have an opening just yet, but at least we have the right person and we can, uh, pull the principals together and they can make the right placement. Does that make sense? Did I communicate that okay? All right. Okay. Another big aspect that's going to be, in fact, is in the national news, the coronavirus. We have a meeting this Friday. Dr. Rollins is leading that meeting in our office. Uh, and we're going to talk about health services, what it looks like for our district. And he'll be rolling out information to you as he sees fit about what next steps might look like. I know personally, uh, my family and I were going to go overseas and we canceled that. Not because I'm fearful of the coronavirus. I'm fearful of not being able to get back into the country. And I certainly want my son, who's a sophomore at the University of Arkansas, to get to go back to class. He received an email that, uh, he would be self-quarantined for a couple of weeks. That's, that's just not okay for me and I want him an opportunity to go back to class. I think I'm paying for that. He needs to be there. So, anyway, we've canceled. Uh, I know school districts around the state, I've been in communication with some, some folks have called me asking what we're doing. And I've let them know that under the circumstances right now, our plan is, we're studying it. We need to see what's happening. My personal, uh, opinion about it being politicized and all is, is simply that, it's real. Coronavirus is real and it, it's a public threat and so we need, we need to take seriously. So information will come from Dr. Rollins in, in the future about what happens through there. Is that okay, Doc?
Yes, sir.
Food service. We're having a food service review right now by the Arkansas Department of Education. They're going to four schools. They're reviewing our meal planning. They're reviewing our food. They're reviewing our free reduced lunch forms that we go through to make sure that there are no issues. Those schools, if you're interested, are SHS, Lee, Bayor, and Helen Tyson. Those are great schools, great cafeterias. We anticipate no issues whatsoever. I meet with a young lady who's doing the review in the morning at 9:00 for an exit conference. So we'll have information to you next month about how that went. Am I going too fast? Am I okay? Okay. All right. Last two things. We've had some significant issues with our fueling station at the bus garage. There are old tanks, there are old pumps. We rebuilt them, put them back together as best we can. We are going to have to come up with a fueling station plan in the next three or four months. We can't continue to send school buses down to the come and go and pay double the price for diesel. It's going to be an investment. I'm sorry. Uh, that's coming. Uh, Dr. Rollins has petitioned me or charged me to try to fix it. And I can tell you that, uh, our, our team at the Transportation Department, we need to be able to fuel our, our buses. And we'd like to do it for our bus drivers to where it's covered in some form or another. I don't know if you've ever tried to fuel your vehicle in the pouring rain. You know, even when you go to come and go or other places, even when it's cold or raining, you have a cover of some sort. Our buses take about 10 times as long to fuel as your car does uncovered. So he's petitioned me to do that. We're going to study that and try to bring you a plan. Hopefully we'll be able to execute it in a timely fashion. Um, anyway. So thank you for that. Another thing I'd like to thank you for is, is you're always willing to say yes to us when we have a reasoned plan. And so thank you. Uh, yes, sir.
If the fueling station includes, uh, the replacement of tanks and the pumps, or just the pumps and add, uh, another?
Very likely a canopy. Well, we'd like to do a canopy. We may rearrange how that's done. The, right now, the tanks are external. Those things really don't go bad. It's the, it's the coating on the inside and some of you know more than I do about it, but it's the lines and the, and, and how it works. And, uh, ADQ is involved. So there, there are steps that we have to go through to upgrade our pump system. We also would like to get the high-flow pumps off the small, or the low-flow pumps. Those won't be cheap. I think we can get the pumps for anywhere $3,500 to $5,000 a piece. We need several. So that's coming. Anything I missed on that, Dr. Rollins?
No, I, I think we're all very interested in seeing that response there. I appreciate your leadership in it.
Okay. Well, thank you. The last thing, I don't know if, if Dr. Rollins has sent you any information out, but we have a tentative date for the classified banquet. It's the 16th of, uh, April. It'll be at George Junior High. And it's tentative right now. Things aren't finalized, but we, we think we can do that on that date. If there are any major conflicts that you have, please communicate those with Dr. Rollins. And as you know, you're always invited. We would love to have you there. The classified team is an amazing bunch of people. And quite honestly, without the classified staff, this district would not work. Certainly wouldn't work as well as. Yes. Uh, it's usually about 6:00, isn't it?
We, I think they start earlier. They like to get there earlier, enjoy the.
Doors will be open early, but, uh, he'll send you a memo out for time and date to make sure everything's okay. That's all right.
And then, uh, can Marcia send an invite so we?
Marshall will send an invite.
Sounds good.
All right. That concludes my portion unless you have any questions. Okay.
I have a question for Marcia. Is there any judgment if we don't accept all these invitations or, do you make any, what do you say, man, that jerk didn't even? I'm just kind of curious because I don't know how great I am at accepting them all the time.
All right. Thank you very much. I know you're excited to get to Kendra and Kelly some.
Good evening. You'll see in your packet this month, you have four students that are requesting to transfer into Springdale School District. Two are from Fayetteville and two are from Gravett and no students are requesting to leave Springdale. And no students are requesting to leave Springdale. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, I'd ask for a motion to approve these transfers.
There's a motion by Mr. Ramos, a second by Ms. Creek. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Board. Dr. Rollins, I only have one item for you this evening, and that is the February financials. It looks pretty much exactly like last month. Our revenue is right in line with where we were this time last year. Our expenditures are slightly ahead, but that's due to some timing of some expenditures. So I expect that to improve here in the next couple of months. That's what I'm hoping for anyway. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Motion to accept the financials, is that it?
Second.
A motion by Mr. Hutchinson, a second by Mr. Emerson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Cory, please come down. Good to see you.
It's great to see you all. It's been a while. I'm glad to be back with you all tonight. I don't usually get to come for the whole board meeting because we have our SEA meetings during the time that you guys get started. And it was so exciting to see all of the students here today. It was really heartwarming and so it's a true testament to you all and to Dr. Rollins, to our administrators, because y'all really are dedicated to our kids and you really support them. So, thank you. Mr. Onvy, thank you for serving us as your president. We appreciate you very much. And Ms. Cook, I know you're going to do a great job too. Welcome, Mr. Bell. Just thank y'all because I know that this is a time commitment and y'all are very dedicated to our kids. In the past month, SEA has been interviewing for candidates for our new UNO serve rep, our new Chris. And we've, we've interviewed several and really been taking this seriously because she was so awesome and we want someone as fabulous as her. But the great, I think this is a good thing, is that these, many of the candidates that are awesome are also teachers. So they're, they're teaching kids right now, but we're still looking for someone to fill her spot. And we have also been working hard to support candidates in the last election that support public schools and fight for our students in Springdale. We worked really hard for Representative De La Rosa. And we had a postcard party for her and made some phone calls for her because she supports our kids in Springdale and our schools in Springdale. So we are supporting her and we'll help her in her runoff. But that's really all that we've got going on right now. We didn't have a meeting tonight because of conferences for the upper grade levels. But thank you all so much again and y'all are very appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Cory.
Any other discussion?
Ms. Cook, that concludes our agenda.
Meeting adjourned.